This meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors special meeting to order. Mr. Stevens, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Knell?
Present.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Isner?
Here.
Good afternoon. We will start with our board discussion guidance, proposed FY 20, 25, 26 budget. I believe Ms. Holland, you're going to start our presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The purpose of today's meeting is to continue our discussion of the FY 25 budget, the changes that you'd like to see made, and further conversation on the tax rate. I will provide a brief introduction, and then I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Stevens to go over topics and questions discussed during the last meeting and since then. To start off, as we discussed at the April 23 meeting, the basic timeline for the budget process runs from September to May, which is about nine months. Of course, it doesn't end there. Once we adopt the budget, we work on finalizing the document, posting it to the county's website, and then loading it to our financial system. As the new fiscal year begins, we continue to work with departments to monitor the budget, adapt to any necessary changes, and ensure we maintain, stay within funding constraints. As we've discussed to this point, the FY 25 total budget for all funds is $289.3 million, with the general fund representing $254.5 million of that. The proposed budget reflected no change in tax rates and no new fees. Also, there were $9 million of requests that did not receive funding. This slide presents the main drivers in the budget, including the increase provided to the school division, pay and benefit adjustments to staff, support for capital projects, including those funded by Pay As You Go or via the issuance of debt, and overall increases to continue the same level of services to our residents. This list shows the main changes between FY 24 and FY 25 in terms of the proposed budget. Seeing where we stand now with those items included in the proposed budget, I'll turn things over to Mr. Stevens.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Holland. I guess you'll have to move the slides forward as we move along as well. I didn't coordinate that very well. I will say on the schools' request, before I forget to mention it, while it is pretty significant at 5.2 million, it's still about a half a million dollars less than they would like from us, would help them with health insurance premiums for their, what their employees pay for health insurance. I'm not advocating for that, other than the superintendent had asked a number of times just to make sure, asked if I would mention it, and I told her I would be happy to do that. In terms of other revenue considerations, again, these were not in the proposed FY 25 budget. I just wanted to mention them as options for you, not really advocating for them either. One is increase of parks and recreation fees. We do have them programmed in FY 20, 26, so they are in the 20, 26 plan. They are not in the FY 20, 25 proposed budget. There are 12 pages of parks and recreation fees. They are mostly five to $10 increases in our summer camps, our after-school programs, our bike rentals, our boats, et cetera. So they are not significant increases, but they are spread across a lot of categories. The most significant increase is if we were to adopt them earlier or to put them in place next year. Swim lessons are moving closer to what the market is, and we currently charge around $50 a lesson. The increase that is proposed for 26 is $120 a lesson, and that is more in keeping what is being charged for swim lessons in and around our community. And the other significant increase is legacy hall rentals. Currently, our daily rental Monday through Thursday is $600 a day, or something less per hour. They would propose moving it to $1,000 in 20, 26. And Friday to Saturday rentals are currently $1,000 a day, and they would propose moving it to $2,000 a day. And then there's a lesser hourly rate if you have it for less time. Both of those, I believe, are still somewhat below market for those type of rental facilities similar to legacy hall. Again, they are not in the 25 budget, but if they were to be, and they could be, it's your direction, they generate just over $500,000 in estimated revenue in the year they're implemented. The other cost that are not in the proposed budget is recycling, the increase in recycling costs. We were at the end of the five-year contract. VIPSa rebid that. We are still part of the VIPSa contract, so about $220,000 more a year to us. In the proposed budget, my plan was to leave it in the general fund side. The increase anyhow, folks currently pay that want to recycle $7 a month. You have a chart here that would show if you increase it and get it to eight, the $1.50 increase to $250 to $350. $350 covers all of our costs. Currently, we're not recovering all of our costs, just we had some overhead that we had kept on the county side, and we've been in this program five years. So initially, it might have, but over years, we have just left that in the general fund. If you increase the recycling cost to be a true recovery of those that choose to recycle, the rate would need to go from $7 to $10.50 a month. $10.50 a month, it would generate another $520,000 for the general fund in terms of removing costs from there. So two options, just as considerations, not really pushing on that. I just wanted to offer them up as 26, we have built in the parks and rec fees. We have not built in, Ms. McCarthy and Ms. Holland, we have not built in recycling fees in 26. So they are not in 26 currently, and neither are in 25. Any questions on that before I move on?
Well, I have, see if anyone else has questions?
I do. Let me see, when you were talking about the budget for the schools, and they wanted a half a million dollars more than what we've included in here. Is that something that, because they're estimating what they're going to get from Richmond, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're not sure about what that'll be. It could be more, it could be less.
I think their number, until the budget is absolutely finalized, I think they don't know that final number. Their estimate is based on what they believe the latest calculation tool out of Richmond was for school division staff, and they were still, there was a half a million dollar shortfall that would help them, I believe with the position and primarily health insurance for what they're paying, what employees are paying for health insurance. That was where they were, and they currently have a proposed four and a half percent raise for school staff. That would allow them to maintain that and not increase their health insurance costs for their employees as much as they would otherwise. Again, I just told you I would offer that, because that was a request from me, at least to make you aware of their desire.
But if Richmond's contribution was higher, then that would give us some flexibility to talk about it later, wouldn't it be?
It would. I think for them, they get into trying to issue contracts, so if we don't approve a budget with these kind of numbers, then they've got to decide, this is what we're offering, because we don't know.
Right.
And if the budget out of Richmond is approved in a June or July or later timeframe, they are still, they can't wait on that, I guess is where they were last year when that was going on, and it took longer. If it gets resolved before then, and there's more money, if you adopted a budget with the increases and they got more from the state, you could amend your budget before the end of the year and take that back. We talked about that as an option last year as well.
Right, okay. That's all. I want to make sure if they got more, then that would come back to James City County, our portion, not what they're getting, but the portion we're adding to it, and then we might negotiate something as far as the half a million dollars if we had a larger cash flow there coming back to us.
And can I just ask a follow-up question on that? Is their intention, do we know that their intention in terms of the funding for the health care program to provide an across-the-board amount to all employees who are participating in the health insurance program? Or is it part of salary?
Mr. McGinn, my understanding is today they were recommending a four and a half percent increase for all their staff, and they would pay whatever the increased cost for their dependent health coverage unless they got the additional funding. The other option that they had mentioned, it might be more important to the school board to lessen those employee health care costs. If they did that, they would give a 4% raise instead of a four and a half percent raise and keep their health insurance costs for their employees, what that employee pays at a lower number. Did that?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, if we're thinking about the, I'm just wondering what they're thinking about in terms of the health insurance part of it, because I'm thinking about lower-paid employees who are receiving those health benefits. If they're getting a percentage increase, that's not really going to help them as much on the cost of health care. So, and I guess not everybody takes health care either, so.
Again, as I think they share with us, they have a number of plans. They don't all take it. Some of them have insurance elsewhere, but they do have plans that are lesser costs, but employees also like the plans that pays more of their claims. And so they do have some options, I believe, for their employee groups, but they still have had that as a concern raised, and something the school board was, I'm told, was debating. And if we provide the additional funding, that would help and keep the four and a half percent raise. If we did not provide it, they may re-change their rates for health insurance and lower the raise from four and a half to five percent for the staff.
Now, our, last year, they were at seven, wasn't it?
Yes.
If I remember correctly?
I think you are remembering that correctly.
Seven last year and four and a half or five this year. That's not a bad, bringing them back up where they need to be, but it's not a bad raise for the last two years.
Yes, sir.
So my question was, I was rather surprised to see that you said that they were not going to give the four and a half percent raise if we did not, so the school board has gone back and scrubbed the budget and looked for $500 more thousand dollars, like we're having a special meeting today to discuss the continuation of the, it just seemed for, to me, for good governance, that you would want to go back, open up your entire budget, see if there was an, if we are not able to give that additional money, that you would want to go back and go through your budget to see if there were, to immediately say you're going to take it away from employee compensation puts this board in a terrible position when we have been, you know, we've tried to do what we could for compensation, understanding that they are losing people for, you know, a couple thousand more dollars. That is not what we want. I think that's why we supported the four and a half percent so far. But to immediately tell us that it's going to come out from the compensation without coming back and diving a little deeper into their budget, I find very disappointing. So the other question I had, and I see Mrs. Boone is here, recycling. I just, I would, just would like, I'd love an update on that a little bit. I, and I realize I'm one person, I do pay to recycle. I don't have great angst paying additional to recycle, but recycling, what I hear all the time, and I don't know whether or not you were aware, that CBS just did this huge expose more on corporate recycling, but talking about plastic recycling, and I think it, it just puts fear into people that they're not truly, what we're sending away is not truly being recycled. And so I have a little concerned if we go that route, if less people will recycle, just going, wow, they're not using our recyclables anyway. Can you speak to that at all?
So I'm not familiar with what the recent study you're talking about, but we do work very closely with VIPSa on where those recyclables go. We do receive a report that tells us what percentage does go. You know, we, we definitely try to educate the best that we can. Recycling, to me, there are so many good things that come from the recycling program, and we are deferring, you know, tons of disposal trash from our landfill. So I think keeping the recycling program's important. You know, it's costs going up like anything else, you know, those trucks cost gas to put in those trucks, and the drivers and the turnover that they've had, they're in really the kind of the same boat that we're all in. So seeing that increase is really seeing what most of us are seeing anyways. But I do feel that the recycling and the things that we're asking for are being recycled. And now you know that we have the glass recycling partnership with OI, so we're trying to utilize that.
So when you get those reports from VIPSa, overall as a county, do we have a pretty good rate of recycling?
Honestly, we have one of the cleanest programs out there, and that is because people that are, have signed up for recycling, understand the program better, and they are putting the proper recyclables in the container, you know. And, you know, there are things that are wishful recycling, and I think PEG talks about those all the time, and it really is that educational piece.
And to be clear, what I was speaking about was a corporate, they were looking at a couple of large corporations in their recycling program, not residential. But when people watch those types of things, it gets, you know, it's, it gets a worry. So, thank you very much.
Can I just follow up on one question, and that is, I was curious, I don't like to pay this monthly, so I pay my annual, I pay for the whole year. Is that reflected in these numbers, or would we go back to people who've paid, had?
For advanced payments, we do record those as a liability, and we apply them to the future bills as they are actually earned, so that is how we account for those.
So I guess what I'm asking is, so then, as the, as the rate changes, then that would just shorten the time period in which that payment would cover?
And so we, yes, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Now, the, if they go, if somebody recycles without being picked up, they can go to landfill or any of the centers and drop their recycling off?
Yes, sir.
And they don't pay anything for that? That's just a free?
Correct.
Dropping, okay. All right, because I've had, I've had quite a few people say, well, I don't recycle, or I take mine to landfill, so, you know, and it's all for the pickup, but they're saying, well, you know, I'm subsidizing that with my taxes for recycling to a certain extent in the general fund, but I don't recycle, or I drive mine there, so I'm, I'm paying twice. I'm paying to drive it there and put it in the bin, but, because I don't have a receptacle that, you know, they'll come out and get, and so I'm, I wonder if that's something to look at. I know you said that would, you know, $525,000, that's a half a penny almost of the tax rate, you know. You know, every penny counts when you're talking about that kind of numbers. But, you know, because if, if you're not careful, we look at recycling like we look at schools, you know, everybody's got to pay whether you have children or not. Well, that's because we want society to be better, and we invest in our children regardless if they're in school or not in school. We're always investing in our future. And recycling, you can kind of say a little bit towards that, but it's hard to make that stretch from a bottle and a child, so it's almost, you know, that's, that's what I'm getting from people, you know, that I'm kind of, we feel like the general fund is subsidizing recycling. I like recycling, I think we should continue recycling, so I'm not against recycling at all.
Thank you for letting me put you on the spot. I appreciate it. Yeah, because I guess we could say that we're putting an investment in towards hopefully less landfill use by recycling, but I get it. I'm not sure we should be absorbing the entire fee, because do we expect it to go up next year again?
Our contract was a five-year contract, so we have just rebid that. I have to look to Ms. Boone at those changes, but I think we'll have that coming forward. But where I had thought we would recover that issues coming is, is we get into solid ways and the discussion for a fee there, we would try to incorporate it at that time. That was really my logic.
Okay.
With the tax increase that was there, not doing that as well, if you want to, I just offer it as an option today because it could be a self-recovery. So Ms. Boone, if you would update us on the contract.
With most contracts, you know, we do the CPI, so there's always that negotiation as we go forward with each year. It's, it's really kind of written in the contract for that, for that flexibility.
Thank you.
It's going up. And I, I'll come back to those when we get to the end of the discussion and see if there's a strong desire to increase them if you're not ready yet, or to leave them as is, and we can make that determination. It'd be nice to have it by the end of the day so we can set you up for next week where you'd want to go, but.
And I'd, and I'd say that in terms of the parks and rec, I certainly would be interested in the facility rental. And, you know, if we didn't have to do the before and after-school program, obviously prefer not to do that, but I certainly think, you know, legacy hall's a nice facility, and that's a pretty good rate that we would wind up at.
Do we have a income-based program? I know we offer the before and after-school as a benefit to some.
I think so. With most of our Parks and Rec programs we do, I would need to verify that for you. But I think if residents have an income-related based approach, there are some opportunities for free or reduced programs within Parks and Rec. I'll verify that on the Rec Connect program. And then for our employees, if they make below seventy-five thousand, they get a discount. If they make below fifty thousand, they get a bigger discount. If they make above seventy-five, they don't get a discount.
Okay.
On the, on the before and after school.
Would it be possible, because I, I think for me, that's a lot of money. And so I think if I had to pick somewhere, that's probably where I would pick. But I, I know we probably, you didn't expect to get into this nitty-gritty, but it would, it would be helpful to know what the impact would be on the before and after school program.
You know, I'd have to go with John on, you know, the buildings and that sort of thing. But the before and after programs, you know, if you think about it, if the children that are out there can have something to do during the day and be off the streets and keep their mind occupied and learn more, it might be a good investment in the community as a whole. And I'm sure the police chief would probably agree that, you know, that the more we keep the youngsters and young people occupied and, and moving in a positive direction, the, the better the community. And, you know, it's a better enhancement for the community as a whole.
Well, again, if, if the board, at least it sounds like it, all but maybe the, the before and after childcare programs. If we increase, most of the fees, again, are five to ten dollar increases. Some of those are per month, some of those are per rental, some of those are per week. But I think we could hold the before and after schools until twenty-six. The challenge of holding it too long is then you get to a position, instead of a five or ten dollar increase, you're into a twenty or thirty dollar increase. And so that was some of our logic for doing it over time. But that would let us calculate a number for you. I still think that number would be significant. And it wouldn't include the, the before and after school care, if that's where the concern is for twenty-five.
But I would just also keep in mind that before and after school care, probably what we're paying our employees has gone up considerably. So I, I'd still like to know at least what the impact would be if we did increase before and after school this year.
It's about eighty-five thousand for just before and after.
Okay. What the, what, what did, what that, would that mean?
And in terms of the cost to the.
Yeah.
Program person?
Yes.
I do have that. For the Rec Connect program, we are talking about pricing going from before school, fifty dollars a week to sixty dollars a week, and after school, sixty a week to sixty-five a week. And then the third, if you do before and after school, it goes from seventy-five a week to eighty a week. So they are increases, but they're not.
Not too bad.
Huge increases, but.
Eighty-five thousand dollars, I, I think five and ten dollars is, is doable myself. So. Me, I'd rather see, just do it this year. But I'll let you get to the rest of your program, sorry.
I had one other question, back on schools. They're looking for the five hundred thousand, and, and of course, we have the, on one hand, if they put it in, in medical or premiums, they could take it from the pay raise. But we don't know what's coming down from the state yet. I think last year we did something like, put something into a contingency so that we could put it in if we needed to, or not put it in if, if the, if the school money came along. Is there a potential that we could do something like that to at least maybe let them know that it's potentially there? But it, it would be dependent upon what, what, what happens with the state budget.
Other than balancing the budget, and Ms. McCarthy and Ms. Holland may shake their heads the other way, the short answer, I believe, is yes. We could put the money in a contingency if you wanted it there. It's still, if you add a half million dollars to the budget, even if it's in a contingency, it still adds a half a million dollars to the budget. So that is where we'd have to come to the other side of how we reduce those costs. You could do that with any of the increase there. This year, the state budget seems a little more certain than it did this time last year, and it was a pretty big divide last year. So I think our comfort level, that it's likely to be something close to what we have, is far greater than it was last year. But we still could put it in a contingency. And what I shared a minute ago, response to Mr. Hipple's question, if, if there were a huge increase in state funds to our school division and in the final adopted budget, I think we'd come back to you before the end of the year. If you've adopted this budget with this money, and we don't believe they need all of that, we would come back to you to amend the budget before the end of the year or when it needed to be amended.
As I said, I would go with the chair's opinion too, as far as, you know, encourage the school to go back, the superintendent to go back and, and look their budget over like we're doing today. And find out where that half million dollars worth of savings could possibly be. If they're that interested in making sure that their teachers come whole on, you know, that, that, that extra increase, then, you know, they need to go back and look at their budget and see where they can come up with it. It's not always our job to take care of their budget.
Sure.
Those are my two cents.
All right, let me move you on to the next slide. I did want to give some options for tax rate reductions in spending or some of shifting funds. I tried to put it in an organized fashion. If you have questions or if confused, I'll be happy to try to clear those up. If you looked at a one cent reduction, for me, we do have some equipment replacements. These are direct reduction and a conversion of part-time positions, so about five hundred and forty-five thousand, we would truly cut from the budget. The shift in funding for me would be with enhanced employee benefits. We really talked about some value towards health insurance and retirement, trying to keep up with those localities that are offering that and not lose our edge in terms of competition there. And our capital budgeting software, those would be things that would be shifting funding, so they are not true cuts to the budget. I just wanted to make that clear. That's at a one cent reduction. At a two cent reduction, we would eliminate some additional overtime that we anticipated and just have to make do and shift staff around or use vacancy savings to cover some of that as time goes forward. But departments, primarily public safety and Parks and Rec, will just have to manage those overtime accounts better. Removal of some, the new positions, it does remove of, excuse me, three of the fourteen new positions. Again, there were sixty-plus positions requested by our departments. We had recommended fourteen in the proposed budget. It removes three of those fourteen. Those are true reductions. Again, down on the bottom half, vehicle replacements and the new vehicle, that sixty-two, or six hundred and thirty thousand and eighty thousand. What I would recommend is, if you consider it for us to pay for those with fund balance. We historically have done replacement of vehicles in our operating accounts because that's an ongoing operating expense. If we were to fund that with, with fund balance, it wouldn't defer that. It wouldn't harm departments in terms of not getting those vehicles as anticipated. And in addition, if you're not uncomfortable with that, I've got the additional four hundred and twenty-one we had cut out of the budget to fund with fund balance for vehicles for departments in the bottom of that column. But that would get us to two cents. At a three cent reduction, again, you're adding on to removal of the positions. We would remove the remaining eleven of, of the fourteen positions that were proposed. It would have a slight reduction in our compensation study implementation. I don't think the two hundred and thirty thousand is significant, so I don't have real concerns with that. But it does get you to a three cent reduction. To get to a four cent reduction, again, adds to, basically takes from the compensation study. I do think that becomes significant where you don't get us back to being above the average or competitive, as competitive in the region. There's still a balance remaining there in the compensation study of about three point four million. So if you went to four, five, and six cents, to me, that is where the rest of that comes from. It come, we would do a five percent pay raise for our employees. That is still a good raise. But it doesn't do any implementation of our compensation study or fix some of the problems that I believe are real within our organization and not just in one department, but throughout. Just, again, it's really for the public as much as any. One cent on the tax rate is about one point three million dollars in revenue to the county. So that's why those are broken up in basically one point three million dollar sections. And again, that would be where I would start. One, two, or three cents, I think, doesn't put the county in a terrible place. You move into four, five, and six, I think it does. And so I just provide that for discussion and see if there are other questions or areas you'd want to go related to that.
So the removal of new positions, you talked in the community meetings regarding the time that it was taking to get things approved and looked at, et cetera. Would this, if, if you looked at a three cent, or is that going to impact that problem that, that we already have? Is that going to further exacerbate that, that problem?
Ms. Larson, for me, it's twofold. My first priority is maintaining and keeping the people we have and filling the vacancies we have. And that's why I have stayed priority-wise, implementation of the compensation study as close to what Bolton has recommended is my priority. I believe filling those staff, some of the challenges within the departments is the constant churn. As I shared before, we have twelve planners, two vacancies, six of those, once they get filled, are going to be less than a year experience. Three of those twelve have like four years of experience. That constant newness in many departments is where I think we're really struggling. So the additional workload is there as well. But if I can't fill the positions we have, then adding more positions doesn't really help to have more vacancies or more churn. So I do think priority for me is the compensation study, and that's why it's listed this way. Do I believe the sixty-plus positions were needed in the departments? I do. There's not money to support those. These fourteen, I believe, are the most critical. So again, I think all of those together help. If your workload goes from a hundred to a hundred and five, and you're doing it still with the same ten people, somebody's picking up that extra five percent. And again, as our workload and community has grown, that is what we're experiencing. So that churn on our staff, the primary, short-term, has been not having people here, not retaining them, having that constant churn. But over time, not having additional staff to carry the additional work is challenging too.
Thank you. There are questions?
I've, I've got a couple. I know at our last meeting, you know, we, we talked about that thirteen million with the, oh, where's my sheet? Oh, lost my sheet again. The unassigned fund balance. And by the time we, we had basically thirteen million down, well, I talked to Scott and, and been trying to go over this and thought, well, okay, couldn't we take that thirteen million and split it in a two-year term and drop our rate to seventy-seven? Sounds like a great idea. I think that, that thirteen million would pay that off in that two-year process and bring the tax rate to seventy-seven cents, roughly, on country math. So if you, you know, if you do that, it sounds, it sounds really good. This, this, this will really work. The only problem I found researching and going through this process is that what it does is it, it's great for right now, and we fought real hard to get our triple-triple bond rating. And that is very important because we've saved millions for the citizens with that bond rating. So that was an excellent thing. The only problem is, is then it looks like, even though it sounds pretty simple, it looks simple to me. What it looks like then is you've dropped your rate down. Now you're taking fund balance to cover that drop rate. So now you're telling the agencies that we had to cover the rate because we brought it down too far. So we're not bringing in enough revenue in order to stay where we are. Now we all of a sudden put our triple bond rating in jeopardy without realizing it. And this would come in effect in a couple of years. Because they'd be like, okay, you did the switch and you dropped it to seventy-seven. And I understand what you were doing. You were taking the funds you had here and putting it there. But now it shows on your books that you didn't, somehow you don't have enough funding to cover that, even though we do. And when you get into the, the budget and the accounting side of it, that's where it, it hangs you up. Because then it, then they look at it and go, well, no, you're taking that unassigned fund balance to carry your regular stuff in order, so we're going to have to downgrade you because you're not bringing in enough here to keep the county going. Even though in two years, we'll do a reassessment, we can look at that again, and if it need to be bumped up, we could bump it up. The problem is, in that process, we look like we don't have enough funds to continue doing what we're doing. So that would be the worst thing. I thought, to me, it, it looked like a great, you know, possibility. And the more I researched it, the more I looked into it, I found out that it, it's not because it can hurt us in the long run. And then all of a sudden, we're paying more for everything we're borrowing. And we've got to think ahead that we've got a school, a library, a new center, and we've got a lot of things coming up. So that bond rating is very important to keep it as low as possible because that's where we're going to get the power to borrow as low as we can. Without that, we're borrowed at a higher rate. That's when we become now, all of a sudden, instead of being prudent with your money in the long run, I'm not. I'm looking at a short term, and in the long run, it's going to cost you more. And we might then go, man, remember when it was eighty-three? That was a pretty good deal. My God, now it's, you know, eighty-nine, ninety-three, or whatever. So, you know, I just want to say, but I'm wondering, on these reductions here, is it, and y'all have to help me through this. On the four cent, if we went to five cent, it'd probably be about six, 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 seven, something like that, just roughly thinking. And that would include the parks and the recycling. That would give you another penny to the four you have here. And can that five million, four hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty, can that unfund balance cover, because you've got thirteen million roughly in that? Can that be applied to that? Or do we have to, if we can't apply it to that, then I want to apply it to projects that we know the citizens want because it's their money. So the, you know, and maybe move some CIPs or some other projects up with that extra money. Now, we've got to keep a buffer. We've got fifteen percent. But we always want to have a little bit more, and I pushed, and this board as well. You know, when I got on here, it was twelve, and then we went to fourteen, then we went to fifteen. And so we're, we've done very well at having a savings, which all of us should have. I wish I had one, no. Wish I had more of one. But we, we all should have a savings in the bank to cover. And so, you know, is that, is that something we can switch and move? And if we can't, I'd like to see it in a, something that the citizens can see and go, okay, there is some funding here. Can we do one or two projects this year or this coming year, the following year? Or can you set it up in that type of motion? And, you know, if we need it, it's there. We can always say, we had to cancel this project because a storm hit or this hit, or it took more than fifteen percent than we thought. Does that make sense?
It does. And Mr. Hipple, I think, I, I don't, we'll talk about that today as long as you want. The short answer is yes, we could identify projects and allocate money towards those projects. I think it takes a broader discussion within our CIP. I had talked about Ms. Larson coming back after we approved the budget. Mr. Eisenhower talked about CIP and the board being more involved, maybe starting that with Parks and Rec in a June timeframe, out of the budget cycle. Those outside of twenty-five wouldn't have made any steps forward in June, and probably haven't made many steps by the time we talk about the CI program next fall. So I think at that point, as you identify projects that are important to the community and to you, yes, we could allocate funds towards that above our fifteen percent. What I would tell you for us, the fifteen percent, while it's a really good number in terms of savings, we've moved from twelve to fifteen, which is a good step. There are communities above that that hold it twenty and above in terms of their fund balance. And we look at that as money we cannot spend.
Right.
Now, the board could change policy and spend it, but for us, we're going to say, that's the floor. We're not going to ever recommend you go below that unless the world falls apart, because that's what that money is set aside for us. So we'd want to have it somewhere where if you had a problem, want to do something different. And over in the CIP, you have a project that's a few years out, that maybe you identify that, and if something changes, you pull it from that. But that's where we would put it, is a project that you want to accelerate, but also gets it out of the general fund. It just takes away our, our flexibility within the general fund unless the board takes action to restore that funding.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch the fifteen. You know, I'd keep that as is, and, and that's our emergency fund if something happens. And, you know, we have a storm come in here, and FEMA says they'll cover it, and a year and a half later, we get our money. But we've already spent the money, so. And when we spend it, we're not getting any return on that money either. So we're losing that revenue that we could have gotten on that return on that money that, that's going out the door while FEMA takes its time to reimburse us. So, go ahead, John. That's just something to think about as well.
It is, it is something to think about. I, I'm just wondering where, where we are in, in this process right now in terms of, is this a time when we want to have that discussion? Or you have more that you want to say about the package of material in front of us before we start that?
Let me move to the tax credit discussion just a little bit, and then we'll, you know, that's pretty close to the end of where I'd be, and then we'll come back with any other questions you have.
Yeah, because I was following Michael down the road there, and, and then I got on the wrong fork, I think.
I get you back on.
Well, again, we did have, move on to the next slide. We did have some conversation and discussion at the last meeting about potential credits. Relatively new in Virginia, Adam's hair was darker earlier in the week. We had really worked him the last couple of days, trying to help us interpret what the code means and how we would do that. He did find a number of communities that had done. He did find a number of communities that had done this in, in the last several years. Uh, one being that you could apply when the bills are rendered in October or November, you could say whoever is owner of the property that day gets some credit on that bill. So I think that would cover what the board's intent was and whether you do that, keep it in terms of cents, just to make it, uh, easier to talk about if you were to do something with a tax rate or not. Or do something on a tax credit or not. If we talk about it in cents, if the goal was to get it to sixty-seven cents. And you did a two-cent tax rate reduction and a three-cent or four-cent credit, this would give you sort of what that potential impact is for a, uh, a home at different values. And again, it would reply, use home values because we've talked about residential primarily, but it will, would apply to all rate classes is how we believe the code would have to be interpreted. So it would imply to anybody that's paying property tax, commercial or otherwise, they would get that same kind of reduction, um, of whatever percentage, whatever cents you applied to their bill that you render in, uh, no, December. And again, you'd also could apply it or not to the June bill. And my assumption has been you would apply half of it to the December bills and half of it to the June bills. So for the next fiscal year, it would have an impact, similar impact to both of the bills you would render to residents and businesses alike.
So I had a, a question about, about the, uh, commercial real estate, uh, assessments. And, uh, my, my impression was that, uh, and I, I should have looked the numbers up before I came over today, but that, uh, commercial real estate did not appreciate nearly the rate that residential.
That's correct. I believe it was around two percent.
Two percent, right, compared to the twenty, uh, one percent, uh, for residential. So, um, you know, I, I think that that's, um, a concern to me in the sense that, uh, you know, I, I certainly don't want to put an, an extra burden on business property, but I do think that they have not experienced the same kind of impact that we're seeing here, uh, on residential, uh, property assessments. Um, you know, obviously, the rate is the rate and, um, these, but the assessments are what have gone up significantly over the two-year period since the last assessment, right? So, uh, I really would like to kind of get a sense if there is any opportunity to do anything. I know at one time we had legislation, but I think maybe it went out the window. I'm not quite sure, um, about, uh, that, that would have allowed us to have a, um, a, uh, an additional rate on commercial property, um, but that may have gone out with the Hampton Roads, the, the first Hampton Roads legislation, the transportation legislation.
Mr. Mc, I don't mind looking into that. I do not know that and have not heard that. Uh, and again, the, the code section on the credits is, is credits is really, or tax refunds are relatively new. Us putting it out there as a credit, you basically have to have a plan to move forward.
Yeah.
But we, we haven't found a way to segregate it and say, you just apply it to residential properties. I think it would have to apply. We believe it's safest to apply it to all, and so some, your commercial business in particular would pay less property tax. Now, they pay may, pay may more el, may pay more elsewhere, but in terms of their value of their properties that went up two percent. If you give a credit back that is more than two percent, they will pay the same or less, which, uh, may help offset some of the residential side for them. I don't, I don't know. I did try to give you various rates. I've done it up to ten. I would say if you get too far in, every penny you would give as a credit, it's one point three million. We would spend it out of fund balance. Ms. McCarthy and I would recommend we reduce our CIP proposals by a similar amount. I wouldn't tell you it has to be dollar for dollar, but it would provide some comfort. I would go on to the next slide, please, and just talk about some of the CIP projects. We had listed those sort of in a priority order for you so that you could see that we would get down to, uh, Upper County Park Splash Bad. That would generate one point six million ahead of that. Well, actually, one point, um, six would be more than our penny. So a penny sort of splits that in there. Uh, it would take us up to six million dollars in deferred projects potentially. And then I'd also look to the school CIP to pay a proportionate share. We have pretty equal CIPs next year. If we reduce ours by a million and a half, I would expect to pull a million and a half from the, the school CIP. I have had some conversation with the superintendent and have a sense that if those projects were deferred a year, most of them don't create a lot of angst for her. Uh, so again, I would, as you get into that kind of conversation around the tax credit, I would talk more about CIP and potential reductions there.
Can you, um, if you go back to the, the previous two slides real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, were these, were these figures, uh, inclusive of, uh, commercial as well as, uh, 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 residential real estate?
Your one point three million would be, and I guess value, if you had a commercial value that was two hundred thousand, the, the values, the home values on the left is really the value of what we're taxing at that time. And Ms. McCarthy, if I get wrong, let me know. But it's, whether that's commercial or whatever else, that's the value. And so that was, we picked those values because the four hundred thousand was our median, pretty close to the median home value. It's what I use in the public meetings. We showed you somebody about half that and somebody double that. So that's where those values came from. But if you had a business that had a commercial property valued at eight hundred thousand, that would be their potential savings as well.
Okay. Now, the, um, you know, with the, the commercial side and the residential side, it, I look at it a little different. It, it sounds like to me we were closer to the assessment on the res, on the commercial than we were on the residential. Sounds like if you look at the two of them and one went up a few percentage and the other went up twenty-one. Well, it sounds like commercially, we were about where we should be to close to a hundred percent. And we know on the residential, we weren't. And so that's why that jumped up, and we're still not there. I'm not saying bring it up any higher. No, not at all. But, um, I don't like paying taxes at all, period. But you, you have to if you want to live in a good community. It's worth it to live here. But, um, you know, so I think that on the commercial side was probably, that was hitting pretty close where residential was probably commercial may have been carrying a lot of residential, which we hope it would. We hope the commercial carries more residential and helps our residents out as well. So shop locally. I guess, looking at, at back at this, uh, uh, the bottom line here, estimated use of fund balance, one point, it was a one penny, one point three million. That one point three million that we would be using for this tax credit would, is planned for, uh, that for both residential and commercial? Or you, you, you'd plan it that way?
That's what the numbers would be. One said across our, uh, real property is one point three million. That's all categories concluded. So yes, these numbers we've given you assume that one point three million back would go to all categories.
And just out of curiosity, do we have an idea of ballpark figure, uh, the assessed value of residential versus commercial in the Flint County?
Um, I don't have the raw data, but I know residential makes up about eighty percent.
I was gonna say eighty, twenty is about what I thought it was, uh, but I wasn't totally sure.
And I think part of the theory with a tax credit is you're really returning last year's surplus. So in theory, those commercial businesses contributed to that surplus. And I believe that's why the code is written the way it is, so you can't segregate that out.
So, so if you, if we were to do, um, for example, um, maybe reduce the tax rate to two cents. And then to come in and, and say, all right, uh, we're gonna do for twenty-five, we're gonna do a four cent, four cent credit, and then for twenty-six, we'll do a two cent credit. And what it does, then it, by twenty-seven, it goes away. So that you're, you're stepping in. That would use up, um, about five point two million of surplus of, of fund balance, um, right on the, uh, first year, if you did it for four cents, and it, another two point six. So it's about seven point eight million roughly for the two years, if you did it that way?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and how do we, you mentioned that we would then, uh, go back and offset some by reducing, um, CIP. Is that, is that correct?
That would be our recommendation. You don't have to do that, and we, we, we've got a fund balance discussion if you have much discussion and want to talk about that. I won't get there unless you want to, but we have a slide that would talk about fund balance. But our recommendation, it doesn't have to be, again, dollar for dollar, but we would be comfortable, more comfortable maintaining that fund balance by reducing your CIP. That way, what you've given here, if you give back five point two million and you reduce CIP by four point five or the five point two, because I've already suggested we spend another million dollars of fund balance to fund vehicles that are currently in our operating budgets, um, we'd want to get you close. That would give us a better comfort level of that flexibility in the future.
Okay. So es- essentially then, we would, we would be offsetting it with, with the CIP so that they, we would, us, we would be keeping our fund balance up higher than, than it otherwise would be if we just totally just spin it down and didn't, didn't do anything else. Okay?
Ms. McCarthy could speak to fund balance a little bit if you'd like her to, just to talk about why she, and I believe that's sort of the, the prudent use and the, the direction to go.
Well, I, I, I noticed that in this one thing she did for us earlier, we, we talked about over this two-year period. We were talking about using, uh, CIP twelve point, um, seven, uh, this, this year in, in this budget. So that would be, uh, that's where you'd take some reductions out of that. Is that correct?
That's correct. That, you have a policy that moves five percent of our general fund over. That's by policy. So that moves over, and then there's another twelve million or so on top of that. So that's what we would talk about reducing. But her plan on the CIP has some use of fund balance over the next five years. And as you project that out and use that, um, it doesn't leave a whole lot above the policy limit at the end of the five-year period.
Yeah, we, we, we're at the end of the, at the end of, uh, the two years, we're down to about twenty percent, which is, I know fifteen, and I, I agree with you. I don't want to. Fifteen's where we want to be. I'd like to have a little more pad than that too. But I think it's, um, that, that helps me. Okay. Helps me understand a little bit better of what you're proposing here.
Any questions on fund balance, or, or you want to come back if you have questions later on that?
Why don't we have her go ahead and go into it?
Okay.
Yeah. Just to touch base, a little bit on fund balance, um, at the time we were preparing the proposed CIP, obviously, we weren't having the, the tax credit or rebate discussion at that point. And so this slide is really just meant to illustrate where we were at the beginning of the budget versus where we would be in our different scenarios. Um, at the end of last fiscal year, which of course was our last complete fiscal year, our unassigned fund balance was seventy-nine point two million. Our total governmental expenditures was two hundred and ninety-six million. The policy is that fifteen percent of that be set aside. Um, and so that leaves an excess of about thirty-four million dollars. So that was the number we started with to say, okay, how much of that do we want to build into the budget? And again, keeping in mind, we're trying to not touch the foundation of the budget. We're really trying to go for one-time expenditures, typically capital. And so in the next five years, we've already programmed to spend about twenty-two point eight million. That left about twelve million dollars that would be left for a tax rebate credit, um, as you see fit. The target, of course, um, at the forty-four million, and you can see at the end of the day, for the proposed budget, we were at nineteen percent. So we already went from twenty-six point seven at the beginning of the year to nineteen percent at the end of next year. Um, and then other, the different scenarios that we've talked about, um, for example, a tax credit at six point five million, which is a five-cent tax credit. Um, you can see brings us down to seventeen percent if we didn't do anything to the proposed CIP. If you made reductions in the proposed CIP, now you're under scenario number two. And so what we did there is we said, we're gonna reduce CIP use of fund balance from twenty-two million to sixteen million and shift that six and a half million to the taxpayers and give that back to them instead. So that effectively is reducing your CIP budget for next year and instead using that one-time funding source to refund or to credit your taxpayers. That still leaves us at nineteen percent, which has the same effect as the proposed budget did. One of the considerations that is difficult to model is that fifteen percent is a growing number. Those percentages right now are based on last year's two hundred and ninety-six million dollars worth of spending. That number will continue to grow, so that percentage will continue to shrink. So that is part of what we're trying to keep in mind as we're playing the balancing act. This also doesn't factor in any of the other one-time unit uses that we've talked about. For example, the vehicle replacements that are currently in the operating fund. If we shifted that to fund balance, that would bring down the fund balance by another million dollars or so. So effectively, however, a tax credit, um, I believe achieves using the unassigned fund balance, giving it back to the taxpayers, but not crumbling the foundation of the budget. We're not shifting it to operating needs so that you have a hole in two years. The way the credit rating agencies look at that is they'll look at the budget, and Mr. Hippel touched on this, and they see that you're using that to fund ongoing needs. And they say, well, what happens after that? And we can say, well, this is our plan, but plans change. We don't know what the next reassessment's gonna do. We don't know what other needs may come up. So from their perspective, they look at it as you don't have an answer. You don't have something right now that you can say. You have different scenarios, and so they don't like it. Um, and Mr. Hippel also touched on the fact, because we are AAA, we have a considerably low interest rate on our debt. It factors into other things we do. It gives us significant negotiation power in all of our contracts. People want to do business with us. That's one of those intangibles. It's not directly tied to an interest, interest rate, but people want our business. And so we see that across the board when we're negotiating as well. So that is a very valuable tool for us.
So this is, this slide is showing the, the excess above the fifteen.
Correct.
Right. Okay. So that gives us some room, and, and even though it drops to seventeen, it's still seventeen above the fifteen.
It's, it's seventeen percent instead of fifteen percent.
Even, even, but is the fifteen isn't considered because it's at twenty-six point seven? So if you take the fifteen off to the side, the seventeen is over and above the fifteen that we've gotten off to the side?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I don't think so. Your, your fifteen percent is in the seventeen.
Yes, so to.
It's in the seventeen?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question.
Okay.
We're currently at twenty-six point seven percent total. So instead of fifteen, we're actually at twenty-six point seven.
Right.
At the end of that scenario, you'd be at seventeen percent, so two percent above.
Okay.
The fifteen.
All right. I thought it was, I thought you were taking the thirty-four, the thirty-four is above the fifteens off to the side, and the thirty-four million is what is left after we have the fifteen off.
Right.
And so then I thought scenario one was taking that ex, the excess thirty-four, seven, and going, okay, now if we take the twenty-two and the five and the, and dropping it down, we're still seventeen above the fifteen. It's seventeen, period. Because you're including in the fund balance in the fifty, you're going back and adding that fifteen in.
Right, because we started with thirty-four million extra. At the end of this year in the proposed budget, we'd only have twelve million extra. When we add the twelve to the forty-four required, then we're at nineteen percent.
Got you.
It's a lot of numbers to get straight.
It is, and that's, and that's still good because, you know, when, when, when I got on the board, we were at twelve and, and doing well. I mean, you know, as far as thinking we had, and then pushed it up to fourteen and now fifteen. And even if we get into this at seventeen or nineteen, you know, which, a buffer's good. There's nothing wrong with having a little extra buffer. Because things move quick in, in the, in the money land of the government, not necessarily everything else, but the money aside, it seems to fly out quicker for some reason. All right. Thank you.
Adam, sure. I think for us, again, it's back to sort of those original questions of where the board would like to be on the tax rate. Would you like to consider a credit? I think we're okay with the Parks and Rec fees. I think that's what I heard. Recycling, uh, likely to go up to be a cost recovery and using one million in fund balance to fund the used vehicles or not, the new vehicles in twenty-twenty-five with fund balance. Those were really the questions we had today, and I think, at least on Parks and Rec fee, recycling, and the fund bound, fund balance uses for vehicles, it seemed to be okay with those three items. The tax rate in terms of where you'd like to be and the tax credit, if any, where you'd want to be are really the remaining questions for me.
Um, I'll start out. Um, I, I appreciate all the, the work you've done on this. And it looks like it's pretty clear to me that, uh, if we want to do a reduction of the tax rate, that it's probably two cents. And from my perspective, because that, if you take a look at what you have, you basically have things that you can reduce from the ongoing, and some of it can be funded from fund balance for the, for the time being. Um, but when you get beyond two cents, you start getting into the things that are the priorities of, of the, uh, personnel and staff and stuff like that.
And Mr. Eisenhour, I, I don't want to advocate for a lower tax rate. I hadn't really had a high confidence you would be interested in the fees. But if you generate another million dollars there, then if you're at three cents, the, basically the two-cent scenario on here is still what works from my viewpoint. So I'm not pushing that. I just feel like I need to share that with you. I, I didn't want to push you to increase fees, but if you're willing to do that, and it appears that you are, that that would allow three cents to be there. When you get into three or four cents under my, or the three or four cents under the scenario that's in front of you on the, on the presentation, that did worry me. With an additional million dollars in revenue, it worries me less to be at three cents. It would still worry me then at three or four on a tax rate change. So, uh, I just want to share that before you get, as each of you think about that. Uh, that additional million dollars in revenue does help some in terms of recurring, ongoing revenue for us.
And I would mention of that million, half a million is already in the twenty-six proposed budget.
Yeah. Um, I, given that, I would, I would be more inclined to, to try to stay at a, at a two-cent, uh, tax, uh, redu- reduction of the tax rate. Uh, the question then becomes what's, um, um, the optimum, uh, whether we want to the optimum, whether we want to do a, a credit, and I think we ought to do a credit. I'd like to try to do something that's a little more the first year and a little less the second year, so that we can, when it goes away the third year, that it's basically steps us up over, up, up over the next two years to, to that current tax rate. You know, I, I, I defer to my colleagues, if they, where they think that ought to be. You know, I started out with the four cents on the tax credit into the, to the second year, but I could be persuaded for maybe something a little bit less if we needed to do, especially if we were going to do some of the, some of the recovery of some of the fees, you know, through recycling fees or, or parks and rec fees. But that, I think that's, I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts on it. I think that would be, you know, we could be looking at it essentially if we did two cents on the tax rate and four cents on the, on the, on the credit. That's, that's essentially the, the bottom line is six cent to the, to the people the first year. It would be four cents the next year, and then, you know, back to where we were.
So I'll, I'll tell you my preferences as, as of now, and obviously we'll have a lot of discussion about, about this and try to figure out where we are exactly. I would prefer to keep the tax rate where it is at 83 cents, and instead focus on credit for this year. From my perspective, the, the greatest concern out there, and, and I have some sympathy for it, is that this is a pretty big hit for some people in one year in the terms of the residential reassessment, not the rate, the reassessment. And that if we did a tax credit only, we would be sending the signal that we feel that the 83 cent rate is justified, and I believe it is. I think that the county administrator has given some areas where he says we could cut if we had to take a penny off the rate or two cents off the rate and so forth, but I think those things are justified, and we know that he's already taken of the 61 positions that he feels were justified to, in, in requests from departments, that we could still, you know, get by with, with a smaller number, and that's what he's included in this year's budget. And so, you know, I think allowing people the sense that, well, the, the bill you'll get in December will reflect a new tax rate, but then a credit that will offset some of that tax increase that you'll be experiencing is a way of saying, you know, we acknowledge that this is a tough nut to swallow in one, in one go, but that we really do feel that we're going to need to have that kind of funding going forward. And I, and I'd say that in part because I don't think we have a real good sense at this particular moment about where we're going to wind up in terms of our tax revenues going forward. And so I'd, I'd rather say we're, we're going to assume that we're going to be at 83 cents in the fiscal year 26 budget than to have to say, well, now we're going to have to raise it to meet our needs in, in 26. If we don't have to, then that may be an opportunity to give an additional credit, but you know, I just think that it would be a mistake to send the signal that we don't think that that 83 cent tax rate is really something that's justified and that we will need because we are going to be going forward. Every year, these expenses are going to increase, and we know that there are other issues and wishes out there that, that we're not able to fund at this point, we might want to try to fund in the future. I'm thinking about, you know, the question of what can we do to make sure that some of our transportation projects don't go away? We've got some, some road projects that are not fully funded and that are expecting more local contribution, both on Long Hill and, and Pocahontas Trail, and there may be others that are out there along those lines. And so from, from that perspective, I, I do think that it's more cautious approach to basically say, we're going to, we're going to try to help cushion the impact of the reassessment increase this year, but then we'll be stepping back up to the 83 cents the following year, unless conditions allow for a better sense of revenue generation than we have right now. And, you know, we've, we've just talked about, you know, finding an additional million dollars, but as Ms. McCarthy points out, half of that was already budgeted for the next year anyway, and we're, we've got to figure out what we want to do about that school request, so, which is half a million dollars.
Well, this is, this is tough either way you do it, it's almost like the, the school board and redistricting. Nobody wants to do either one of them. It's a very, very tough thing to, I, you know, I know when we did the penny, I had more people telling me, you might as well keep that. He sent me $20, really? You should have kept the 20, and it's never sent me that, and I can understand that. You know, if it's, if it's not significant, it, it's, it's, it's just not significant, I mean, it's just the way it is. And most people would say, if it's 20 or 30 dollars, keep it, keep it and use it on something. So, you know, and, and I know I, I keep banging on the, the fund balance and, and knowing that there is cash there, and you know, and, and you know, even if we did the scenario of a, you know, a taxing, a credit, say, you know, you, you'll, you'll look at it and, and, you know, there could be some significant changes or significant advantages for the, the people out there if we were to do, you know, say we're to take, it's only six and a half million, say went, that's five cent. Well, you know, on a, you know, $200,000 house, you're looking at 200, or $200, 17 dollars a, a month credit, and, you know, that, so there, there's some, you know, significant savings there for the, the residents, and I think by using that money over the next two years, you know, at 13, maybe say we're going, well, at 12, I thought it was 13, but my math was off, 12, so we'll take that 12, say we divide it six and six, and say, all right, we're only going to use six of it out of the 12. And, you know, and, and that way we've got the six as a buffer to the 15 we have. So that's going to bring our percentage up, but there's $6 million there that, you know, I would think we could do something to help, and I'm not saying, because if we, if we take the rate down, it looks like we're taking money from here to hold the rate up. For our rating, that's not going to work. I think it's a great idea, and, and to me, it worked wonderfully, but the credit ratings would just be all over it. They're saying you're subsidizing your funding. So what we'd have to do is look at it and go, so then maybe it's, it comes back as, which we can do, as a credit. Okay, we're going to give you X amount this year, depending on the percentage you pay, and X amount next year on the percentage you pay, and, and that still gives us a 6 million hole, but keeps our budget as a whole as well on what we need, because the last thing I want to do is cut into employees, cut into all the things that keep everybody here, that keeps them going to Newport News, Hampton, York County, or anywhere else, and, you know, and, and what I've said for a while now is, if, if you want to get rid of, or slow down workforce housing, pay your employees what they deserve to be paid, and that'll take that out of there, because then they'll be able to afford to live in the community that they're in and they're working for. That takes care of a lot of workforce housing, but that again takes, you know, if you're going to be a bear, be a grizzly, so you got to be a grizzly in order to say, hey, this is, this is what we need to do. And I think it's important, and I think that's what we need to do, but I think there's a little bit of revenue in here that we can shift back to the residents, and so if we took that 12 million and cut it in half and said, we're going to do 6 million, not change the tax rate, I thought by changing the tax rate, a lot of people going, gigging me about this, and but I thought by changing the tax rate to 77 and eating up that, what I thought was 13 million, I see now it's 12 million, but eating up that 12 million, then that would, and bring our rate down. But then what it does is it affects, like I said earlier, it affects our bonding capability in the future, and that's the last thing we want to do, because then that jeopardizes everything we're doing and everything we've got going on to try to save something in a short time, and you're not looking at the long game, and we always try to look for the long game. So that's my two cents for this moment, but I'll come back.
So does that mean you, you favor credit?
I didn't at first, but I.
Rating the rate reduction?
Because the rate reduction will send, it'll, it'll send a message to, and, and we've got to think of it, and I, and I know it's not a, something a lot of people be happy with, but we've got to think of our credit rating and how to keep that in place, but also take the extra funds that we have here and give them back to the citizens. It won't reduce your rate, and your house is going to be valued at what your house is valued. We can't change that, all we can change is that 83 cent. Well, if that is in a way going to affect our credit rating in the future by subsidizing it with this fund balance, then what we'd be better off to do is take that fund balance and give it back as a rebate to the citizens, and then that way the citizens have some money back.
So just so I'm clear, are you, are you at a five cent tax credit?
If we can fit it somewhere within the, let's see, the five cent, uh, do, 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 let me find it real quick.
Scenario two is.
Five, six, so, or 6.5 million, so if we took that 6.5 million and gave that back, it still gives the buffer 5. some million, that's, you know, that's over the 15, so it's getting us close to, you know, a lot higher than what we thought we were going to be, so I would say five.
So before I go to Supervisor Noll, what, did you have a suggest, did you have a suggested tax credit rate that you wanted to, to suggest, or did you just, you were just in favor of a tax credit and keeping the rate at the same, talking to you, sorry Supervisor.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I mean, I think we can sort of work our way through this, but I, I would be more inclined to say maybe four cents, three, three to four cents, may, but maybe, you know, maybe, maybe the five cent makes sense, but, but I think the condition I would want to put on that is simply to say, and we'll reevaluate in 26, because I do worry a little bit about, you know, the, the softness of revenue. We saw the big drop that we had this year in other sources of revenue that meant we had to, to rely so heavily on real estate taxes, and if that, if we don't see the sales taxes start to tick up again and state funding and so forth, and knowing that we're not getting the kind of federal aid we were getting, you know, I, I wouldn't want to overpromise for the following year.
Can y'all tell me if, if I take?
I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry, I know, I just want to make sure I get everybody down so that when we get here, we can see where we have a consensus and where we don't.
I take that six and a half million out of there. What percentage does that change from the 19 or 17? Do you know roughly?
Yeah, and some of it would depend on whether we leave CIP as it is, or whether we take any projects out. So you're looking at between scenario one and two there. Scenario one, leave CIP as it's proposed, it gives the 6.5, so that gets you at a 17% liquidity rate, and then scenario two achieves the same six and a half, but it takes it from CIP. We're reducing projects, reducing the CIP budget and giving that back instead of, like in lieu of, and then we're at 19%.
19, so it kind of just flops.
And, and I know you've told us in the past that, that it was possible without, without taking in any of this discussion into account for us to finance a middle school without necessarily affecting the tax rate, but now this would be a different scenario, would it not?
Yes, this has been evolving.
So that's part of the reason that I would say, you know, we really can't overpromise for 26, because if we have to go ahead and build that middle school, that's going to jump right into the CIP, right?
I think we'd have to reevaluate.
Yeah.
All of the.
But it all depends, because on 27, our debt goes back down again. We're going to pick up in 26, but it's, it's still going down without that. So we're, we're, we're declining on our debt there, we're picking it up on the new building, but that would be wherever that is. So we're, we're still on a decline in the entire scenario through 27.
We have, we have a new borrowing program this year for the pre-K and for the general services building of about 74 million, and then our next borrowing would be in 2026 for the government center.
Right, and that pushed us up to, because at 23, we got to 86 million in debt, and then 24 bumped us up to 148 roughly, and some change, and then 25, 132, and then by 26, a new building will be at 218. Okay, and, and, and then, then in seven, it's going to go back down a little, that's going to take that curve back down again as we pay those others off. I don't have the rest of the chart, but I know in 27, we're dipping back down again. Of course, you never know what will come up, something else will, but I know when I got on this board and, and values today are a lot higher than they were then, we were 227 million in debt, and we're not even at what we were then, so we've, we've done very well as a team. It's keeping our debt down and having projects and doing pay-to-go and all that, and the triple bond rating has, has also helped with that, so, you know, and in 27, 2027, we'll be looking a little bit better than 2026. That's where we're going to hit that peak where we're just about to where we need to be before we get nervous, but then we drop back down.
Yeah, and I think you're talking about some of the refundings that we did to take advantage of the lower interest rates a few years ago, and we did that. We do have some debt that's getting paid off at the end of 2026. That opens up some capacity to take on some additional debt, which is how we were able to work in the new government center without a, a huge impact on the operating budget. If we were to have to build in a, a middle school, we would need to revisit the whole CIP and potentially move some things around, but that is part of what we look at in the overall budget process and obviously other funding streams and that type of thing as well, so.
Thank you.
I would remind you that when we hit 227 million years ago, we had done it right after we had built three schools in two years.
Yes, oh yeah.
So we had a big.
No, I'm not saying it was misspilled, no, it was a lot of projects going on. I'm just saying where we were then.
Where we were then.
And how well we've done with staff and everything else, and, and everything has gone up tremendously in that amount of time, and we're still not where we are, so just want to, you know, the general public to understand how well we've managed and kept our debt down and paid as we went, and did pay-go projects and, and all that, in just the short time I've been here, how well things have been managed by staff and the board and, and all that. Credit to everyone who's been involved in this, been, you know, a good job on, on all your part.
Supervisor Noll?
I feel like my head's going to explode here. I have one question. Has anybody looked at or considered lowering the rate for personal property tax on our cars and vehicles? I was at a meeting on Friday with a bunch of people at VACO that are supervisors and, and administrators in other counties, and one of the things they did bring up was, was lowering, Spotsylvania lowered theirs 10 cents. We need to give something back to the people, and everyone I spoke to, they lowered their tax rate. And it was five and six and seven cents, I think Spotsylvania was five or six, seven cents, they told me, and I have a feeling, and I think you all know this, when you get a rebate, you forget about it. You don't see that it actually does anything for you. You don't see that it actually does anything for you. So even giving people a five cent credit is, I would just say, to keep the money, because it's just not anything that they can really relate to. And when we did all these, um, town halls and everything, everybody was talking about people that are on fixed income, and there's plenty of people on fixed income, including people that are on subsidies from the government and so forth. And these, these increases are phenomenal. Even for me, it was almost a thousand dollars a year, and I'm on a fixed income as well. So we're not getting money, we're not getting five percent raises like all the county people are and so forth, and I'm not upset with them getting that. But everybody out there in the public is not getting that. And we have got to lower the tax rate. And I would say, I would love to see it at seventy-five, I don't think that's gonna happen, and I know it can't happen. But I think we need to get it below eighty. And if we can get it down in there, I would say probably forget about the credit. And let's look at, let's look at giving something back on the personal property taxes, because everybody has cars. And they'll, if, even if they don't own a house, that's something you're giving back to them.
Yes, ma'am, and we hadn't, we had not looked at the personal property rate, it's been where it's been for a while, we certainly could. The challenge for us within the budgeting process will be the same. If you take a million dollars out of personal property, we still have to reduce expenses by that same million dollars. So we have the same discussion of challenges, and, and I do agree that if you do a rebate, I think people get lost, because you get a bill and you get a separate check, because the way we're talking about the credit, at least on the bill that's rendered next year, if you do three cents, five cents, six cents, whatever, the bill will be the same as if you lowered the tax rate for next year. So I think that is not more, I don't wanna say more meaningful, but it's the same effect in terms of their bill next year. Now, when you look to FY twenty-six, it leaves it open that the bill could increase in twenty-six, but I think it does help in twenty-five, whether you do credit or reduction of the tax rate. The tax rate reduction to five or six cents, to me, would put the county in a very unpleasant place in terms of being able to serve the community going forward, and I do worry about that.
I understand the difference between the credit and the tax rebate, but, um, I don't know, I just, I just think we've got, we gotta find something somewhere.
We, we did, of course, um, uh, follow the recommendation of the Commissioner of Revenue and, and reduce the, uh, the assessment ratio to seventy-five percent of value, uh, a couple of years ago, and that saved about nine million dollars for taxpayers and the community. Um, and that was to address the rapid escalation in, in assessments of used cars, which are now, um-
It's changed.
Ch- yeah, now, now come down quite a bit.
So-
I, I, I don't know, um, whether, if we changed the tax rate, that would impact our state funding under, uh, the program. Uh, it would not-
It, it would not, it's, um, it's been redeveloped as a block grant, so it's a fixed amount at this point, at nine point seven million, and it's been that for a number of years, as opposed to a percentage, like it started off as.
But it still is a percentage for, uh, uh, declining percentage of-
Yes, absolutely.
Tax bill, right, yeah.
So this is very tough for me, because I have great empathy for taxes. Um, and, you know, my husband and I have lived in our same house for twenty-plus years. We're kind of the last people left, most of our friends moved up, moved into bigger homes, gated communities, or, um, more fancy neighborhoods, we love our neighborhood. Um, we've stayed in our same home. And part of that was because we did not want to take on a lot of debt, we had children to put through school. And so, um, in doing so, we've, we've watched a house that we bought for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is now, I think, assessed from the county by, for about four hundred and fifty thousand or so, um, which we are willing to pay for because of the quality of life we receive here. And, um, but that's notwithstanding that I don't have, I've shared before that I, uh, you know, my parent, my mom lives in it here, and, um, I understand, uh, fixed income and, um, those type of things. I also understand that we hired a county administrator to tell us what we needed to do as a county. And we, we're, things that we needed to address and, um, has come to us, I think, in a very thoughtful manner with a budget, um, of need. You know, I've gotten, I've read the, the emails I've received, I've seen the extra talking, um, the accusations, but I think that this, uh, county administrator, along with staff, has put a lot of thought into, um, and really trying to prepare us to be in the best possible spot that we can be in. And so I think we either take that recommendation or we don't. If we don't take that recommendation, then we need to be ready for what that means moving forward. Um, and, I mean, it's very easy to say, take it out of CIP, but that does impact our citizens, because we're not gonna be able to do things that we need to do. Um, and, you know, I sent the county an email last week, because I have been driving by the same orange and white barrels for about five years on Route Five, one so old now that it is turned over with grapevine growing over it. Um, because VDOT just stuck it there, there was a problem, and they just stuck a bunch of barrels there. And it was, that was actually one of three issues that I believe I sent in that email. And they were not addressed, because they don't have any money to address them. So they just stick a barrel there, it's not fixed, it's not nothing. And, um, so we're gonna have to decide if we're gonna be barrel stickers, because I think, I know Mr. Hippel can, can agree with this, is that we have had to step in and fix a lot of barrel stickers. And that's what, that's what, where I get worried, when we start talking about, um, changing our revenue outlook. And so I just want people to understand that there is a, there is a cost. I mean, there is only so much squeeze you're gonna get from the juice. Um, and we do step in and have to do a lot of things that are not picked up any longer, um, by the Commonwealth. And if you want them done, that is something we have to do. So, um, I'm, you know, I will go along with the will of this board. I just, I just don't believe that the county administrator has produced a budget that he doesn't feel that, you know, that he doesn't believe in. He has, so whatever we do, I just have to understand that there's an impact. And so, um, that's where I just, I have the, the toughest time, um, when you, when you start looking at changes. Um, I, I would go along with a, a five cents tax credit, um, that Mr. Hippel has proposed, um, with caution, um, just knowing moving forward next year, um, you know, if we have to reevaluate. Uh, and then on the other, you know, I, I would really hope that the schools, um, you know, if, if we're able, I, do we, I don't know if we ever came up with a decision about the additional half million ask, um, there, but I, I would really hope that they would, you know, if, if it's possible for some scrub, you know, if, if that's something they're willing to look at, or do you all want to put that in? Do you want to hold that to wait for the Commonwealth? Um, or you, you think where we are, where, where do you want to be with that, with the additional ask from the schools?
And Ms. Larson, wherever you want to go, but Mr. Icehauer, if you want, if you wanted to do something and hold it reserved, we could put it in a contingency and hold it there. I think with the additional, uh, fee increases proposed, we could put it aside and not give it to them. If you don't want to do nothing, we could do that as well. I just want to at least offer that as an option as you go forward and talk about it.
If I was in that situation, and I knew you were putting it in there as a hold, it's no need me scrubbing anything and look for anything. I mean, plain and simple, I just tell it like it is. And, um, so I would say no, and let them look for that extra and see if they can find it. Now, if, now if there's funds left over, when the Richmond does everything they need to do and gets the budget out to us, and, and there, if there is funds available and all that, then I'd say we revisit it and look at the possibility of, of maybe enhancing something if we've got enough funds there to do that. But, um, you know, I would, I would look at saying, hey, scrub your budget a little full, a little bit more, we're doing it. We're looking for everything, and it's no problem that they can't go out there and look for everything. It's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. My two cents.
You don't have to say anything, I just wanted to open it up just in case.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, 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 obviously, you know, we, we need to come to some kind of conclusion on it. Um, I, I do, I hear what Mr. Hippel's saying about, uh, about taking away the incentive to look for, for, um, reductions or savings in other areas or additional revenue that might be available, but, um, uh, the que, the, the challenge is legislature's gonna meet, um, from the day before our next meeting till the day after our next meeting. And so we may, uh, may not have a full sense, although there will be a, a budget proposed, I'm sure at that point, but that's really pretty quick turnaround. Uh, so, I, I don't think that the, that a half a million dollars to, um, add to the compensation package is a, um, a terrible ask. I think our percentage, the percentage of the county budget that's going to schools has declined somewhat, I think, is that right?
Only because the pass-through is different now. It hadn't declined.
Oh, that's true.
It's just that pass.
Sales tax for education.
That's right, we still paying the-
Yes.
The lion's share, so it's not a-
Right, right, no question about that, yeah, yeah. So, I don't know.
Maybe-
We'd always revisit it if we do our budget.
We can make that, I mean, I know we don't like to make decisions on the fly on Tuesday, but maybe we'll have some idea.
We could ask the schools, um, how they're trending this year as well, in terms of a surplus.
Okay.
And if we need to come back and amend the budget after we approve it, you know, if that's something y'all feel it's important, then we just come back to that one.
The only thing I would add is, uh, you know, I, whether it's a tax rate decrease or whether it's a tax, uh, credit, the net result is the same. It's what your bill is. And so, um, you know, I, I, if we're gonna, if we're gonna decide that we're not gonna lower the tax rate, we're gonna leave it at eighty-three cents, but we're gonna do a credit, then I would suggest we do the credit in, in the, the five cents. But I would also suggest that we go to scenario two and, and, you know, lower the CIP. Um, and then we can discuss the other revenue enhancements as, as we have a chance, but you know, I, ultimately, I think we, we have to have, we have to have that, that kind of a reduction, which I think would be helpful to a lot of our folks in, in the county.
Hey, do you have direction?
I think so. Ms. Hall and Ms. McCarthy, anything else we ought to ask?
Do you, do you want to go back to have a board discussion at all on, on the, uh, recycling or, or the fees?
Do you like to?
I, I don't know, I, I just, I know there was a lot of discussion about it, but I don't, I don't think we've, we've reached any conclusion of whether we want to or don't want to, and I'm just-
I think Mr. Stevens thinks that we have, in that the parks and rec and then recycling up to the entire amount.
That, that was at least my sense, is that it would make recycling a self-supporting, and if you're, if you choose to recycle, you pay it, and if you don't want to pay it, you don't. Again, I think it's still something we would revisit as part of our solid waste conversation and probably adjust that in, is, is I believe we'll move forward with something of that in the years to come that adjusted at that point.
Yep, I agree.
I see sort of-
Yes for me.
-nodding.
I know it's angst, because it is recycling, and we, we would like to encourage people, and we don't want money to be the issue for someone not recycling.
But we're gonna look at the whole program here another year or two.
Yep.
To see where we are, and then that'll be all put into one.
Okay. Hey, is there any other discussion? Okay.
I, I, I will just, I do, I just want to say one thing, and that is, I, I feel qualified as a, um, as, um, a, I guess, member of AARP, is a way to put it. To ju, to just point out that, um, uh, you know, the, uh, the economy's doing pretty well, um, the stock market's doing very well. People who have investments are, are, uh, are able to deal with some benefit from that. Social Security has actually increased pretty substantially in the last two years, uh, this year less than last, but, uh, it's still been a double-digit increase in, in social security benefits. And, uh, I, I also worry about young families that have, um, issues, uh, that, that they need to deal with. And when we say, well, you know, um, I'm on a fixed income, you're not, well, yeah, what, what is, what constitutes a fixed income? I, I guess, that's, that's a little bit of, of a challenge for, for me to buy. We, we did take action this year to, uh, address the issue of those, um, residents who have low incomes, uh, and, uh, um, would now be able to qualify, a larger share of the population would be able to qualify for, uh, some, uh, tax relief through, uh, that program. And so it's important to remember that as well. And that we have another program in place that, uh, addresses, uh, uh, disabled veterans, um, and their, uh, property taxes. So, um, you know, I, I think the burden has to fall on general population, but there are ways in which we're trying to address it for everybody.
Thank you. All right, um, with, is there a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four for the regular meeting?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knell?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Icehauer?
Aye.
Ms. Lars?
Aye, we're adjourned.